Mr. Butler, are you ready? All right, let's call our, this special meeting to order. And we're here today to discuss a road bond issue. We brought here before the board and before the people, the public. Mr. Butler, take it.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, we've got some paperwork here and some consideration for the county commission today on utilizing the anticipated gas tax to bond again, to get some road paving money to pace some roads, countywide. And Mr. Ralph Ceylon, we all know him as Uncle Ralph. I've been working with Ralph for the last 25 years, dealing with bonds. And he's here today to explain what they can do, what Harbor Financial Services can do. Been back and forth, back and forth. County staff-wise, Mr. Hammond has dealt more with Ralph than I have. From over a month of correspondence back and forth, and he has evolved from a month ago, month and a half ago, to now looking at numbers and what the new rules are, and there's different laws in place now than the last time we bonded. But I would, I would turn it over to Mr. Ralph Ceylon, let him give us an idea of what we're trying to do. We're trying to recognize some additional gas tax revenue coming in, and it will give us some money to pace some roads with. And if I could just throw in one, one piece of information, there's going to be people on both sides of bonding gas tax. Gulf County has bonded gas tax for several years. Some counties have never gone out and bonded gas tax. And we probably have some of the fewest unpaid roads in the state of Florida. We have very few unpaid roads, which means we have a lot, lot less road grading to be done. And that comes real handy after weekend storms, one thing or another, where dirt roads get gutted out, and we have to get it on the weekend and work on them, or whenever, when we have rain events. But we've been pretty fortunate. Now, we're probably, we're probably under 80 miles, if you count every little, any road we have. We were pushing 25 years ago, a lot more than that. So you paved a lot of roads, and I'm probably high on the number of roads I'm talking about. But my best, probably four, five years ago, a former DOT secretary, she was Secretary of the Department of Transportation for a term. And she's in Clay County now as county administrator, and she is, she is pretty adamant that it pays the road to bond your gas tax and pave your roads. The bottom line is going to be cheaper for the future. You get a ride on these roads for the next 20 or 30 years that you pave, and you don't have to maintain them like you do with a road grader. And you can do a lot more with a paved road. And some of this we're talking about is going to be resurface work, some of it's going to be new construction work. But if I could, turn it over to Ralph. Mr. Ceylon can give you a good detail.
All right, Mr. Ralph. If we can, I think we can.
I'm pleased to be asked to, one more time, see if we can't help tighten up your situation here financially, and do some things that obviously the board has expressed an interest in doing. The only thing we have, need to do today, but we're going to do some other things, because I want to answer any questions you may have. But we're going to ask you today to authorize the attorney to advertise on this Friday, is it, Jeremy? For a public hearing that will be held on the 22nd now, Wednesday, the 22nd. And we'd like to hold it at noon, and frankly, that's for Mark Busch, who was the bond attorney, and my convenience mostly. I'm going to be in Manatee County the night before, so we're closing a $91 million deal there, and it's for utilities. And I have half of that, so I'd like to show up. Got some grandchildren needing shoes and all that stuff. Anyway, it's a convenience, but it seemed to work out with your staff. The purpose of today is to authorize that to happen. If I could stop there, I never had been around Jeremy until we started this the last month or so, and I'm very impressed with him. I would like to tell you all that. You appear to have a good county attorney, and we've worked with several of them here over time. Of course, I've worked with Ms. Becky before, and the clerk's office here has always been cooperative, and I'm looking forward to doing that again. We already had some interchange there, we've got to have some more, whatever. But anyway, you all have got good staff people, and they own top of your business. Mainly, I just wanted to find out what you want to do, what you need to do, and then, as Don said, Michael and I have been working on this thing for, I think it's about six weeks, trying to fit all these pieces to do what you want to do. What we will accomplish, if you pass this and go forward with it, we will get you a million dollars back that you had to use when the insurance company went belly up five or six years ago. The county had to put up a million dollars as additional reserve because of that fact. That wasn't nothing you all did. They went belly up everywhere, and some places required additional money. Gulf County's a small county. Their gas tax at that time was just about flat, and so there was demand for another million dollars, which all stepped up. We're going to get that back for you. We're going to refund the bonds that can be refunded, and there is $240,000 savings on that. Excuse me. It amounts to $240,000. Did I say million? But anyway, $240,000, about 4% present value savings. So it's a good deal to refinance it. But the reason primarily we were refinancing is to get rid of that covenant that you all had given them the million dollars, so I can get that back for you. When we refinance that, all that goes away, and you can, you will get that when we close. And you will save over the life of this issue something like, the least is $10,000 a year, and the most is 15 or 14. So that's the reason we're doing that. Makes you, saves you a little money, plus gets the million. Now, the numbers that we have played around and gotten it fine-tuned, fine-tuning whatever, and what we tried to do was to take that list that we asked you all to make out, that some roads would go in each district, if you'd like to do it that way. In other words, gives you flexibility on what, how you use the money, as long as transportation related. In y'all's local, local option, the local agreement with the city and with we all, they're going to get, in the city of Panama City, a million dollars, and we all's going to get 500,000. But county, in y'all's agreement with them, you all will do their work for them, so they can get that done at the same time, do it cheaper. Primarily, the city is going to tear up their shoreline down to repay the, so it's all transportation-related. I'm not sure how we all's going to do it, but anyway, it'll be an efficient way of using the money, because you all will do it all. It's got to be in conjunction with what they want done for that part of it. I think that is the highlights. The other thing that you're very fortunate about is we had an all-time record low on interest rates. I wish we were doing it today. We don't need to put it off any longer than absolutely necessary for our time to work. We got to have so much, so many days passed in order for your public hearing to be legal when you hold it on the 21st. And then as soon thereafter, as we can market these bonds, which should be in the next three or four days after that, we'll probably have them all sold, just waiting on the time to come, because of rates are good for us. I think I've touched everything that has been asked of me, and when I'll stop now, and if there are others who want to say something to me or ask me something, I'll try to explain best I'm able to. I'm not as smart as Jim Williams, but I'm pretty smart.
All right, is that all, Mr. Ralph?
Yes, sir.
All right. We're going to open up to the board. Anyone on the board have any questions regarding this road bond?
Mr. Chairman, I have a question. Mr. Ceylon, I'm joining, Brian, we haven't met.
No, ma'am.
It's nice to meet you.
Thank you.
This morning. My, one of my questions is, is this a tax-free issue?
Well, it's a tax-free mostly, but there's a taxable tail to it, we call it. In order for it, we can refund more bonds than we can do tax exempt. So we, now, it just so happens that the rate's pretty much the same right now, so that doesn't really matter.
Well, the, the rate, and of course, I'm not an expert at this, as you are.
I'm not either.
I am quite the novice, but in, you know, reviewing the Wall Street Journal and reading what's out there to, to review, the rate seemed a little high to me. The 3.1 seemed a little high.
It actually is a little low. The rate, well, yesterday's rate was about 3.5.
Okay, well, I guess we're probably referring to different sources, and...
Well, mine is where you sell the bonds.
And, and your, and this is your business, so that's why I'm asking you.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
And I'd like for you to ask anything you want to.
Okay. Are, so, of course, I haven't, this is my first bond issue with you, going through this, clearly, this morning, we're told that the county's been working with you for a long time now. So is your firm going to buy these bonds and hold them, or are you just going to sell them?
We will try to sell them immediately.
Mm-hmm.
And we'll try to have some of them sold before you all tell us to sell them.
Okay, but you may hold them.
We cannot release them until all the procedures are done, and they'll be held in escrow by your bond counsel, who's like Martin Busch, of the neighbor's firm.
He's coming on the 22nd, is what you said?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
And Warren works with him on the State Association of County Commissioners, and their firm, I guess now Warren is probably the biggest county, local government firm there is. That used to be Bryant Building and all of it, but they're sucking, well, let's say that a little better. They're falling by the wayside and whatever, but they're still a good firm. They've got one or two good lawyers, but they just can't do as much work. They're doing a deal in Manatee with me, but it's lawyers in Tampa that I'm working with there, but it's the neighbor's given firm. Got a lot of confidence there.
So if I understand this correctly, we're rolling the existing debt into this new, new issue?
That's one way of saying it, rolling it. Technically, it's not what we're doing. We're refunding.
Refunding, okay. So we're refunding the debt and pulling this new money. What is the current coupon rate for this debt that we're refunding?
Well, I don't know.
I know you said that it's gone down considerably, and I won't hold you to the exact, but do you know roughly what it's, what it's at?
It's around $50,000.
Okay.
As I was saying earlier, somewhere in there, the difference between the rates and the 75% of this that we are refunding is, is somewhere in the neighborhood of $240,000. But anyway, it's about $10,000, $15,000 a year. Grant the aggregate of it over the life of the issue, you'll save $240,000.
And, I mean, it seems that the rates have been down for a while, so...
They have.
I'm wondering why we haven't looked at doing the refunding in the past. Is there, is there a reason why we haven't?
Because I couldn't get your staff interested.
Okay.
I mean, that's, oh, really, initially, and, you know, I'm just a straight talker. I'm a candid person, and I'll tell you the truth whether you like it or not, and all that kind of stuff.
I appreciate that.
But anyway, the interest here, for some reason, with you all relating to me, was getting a million dollars back. You really didn't need money to pave roads and whatever, you keep saying that, but you didn't like the fact that they was using the million dollars to be able to keep the debt.
Can I say something? There was two reasons for, for me. Initially, the city of Port St. Joe was very interested, and they've got a lot of work to do, so they had actually talked to staff and all a couple of years ago. But the reason that we haven't, and I, you know, I've told staff I wasn't interested in it, is we couldn't, we couldn't get enough money either to do a whole lot of good. So we, by waiting longer, I think we're able to get a little bit more money to do more good than what we could have done two years ago.
That's correct.
So I, that...
You're right.
Well, that, that was my reason. But the number one reason I have told staff is I want the taxpayers' million dollars back. It rubbed me the wrong way when that, when I...
Well, for others as well. I say others as well, it's rubbed the wrong way.
Yeah, so, and you say we will get that back immediately once we, once we close this deal?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
If they have closed, the clerk will disperse certain things. They'll pay the bond counsel and whatever. But among those things is $1 million, and I have it listed separately, so it won't be in no damn bucket of money coming.
Yeah.
You'll get the million dollars separately, and it'll be earmarked for you all, for your general fund that you got it out of. And I'll ask Ms. Becky if I can talk to her today, because I won't be sure. It's like she needs to have it done, but that's the way I've got it now.
And just let me add to that, too, because we've looked at it for, the board asked us a couple of years ago to look at it. And the main reason that Don wasn't ready to recommend it, because the savings was not there. It really wasn't going to save us a penny to, by the time we paid the fees, to refinance, and we were going to have to extend the life of the debt, which we cut out now, and you weren't going to get the $2 million. Now, because the rates are low, and again, just because there's a lot of difference between the regular market and the bond market. The bond market's been screwed for the last six or seven years, but the, you're saving a quarter of a million dollars over the, just by refi, and without extending the debt, you're getting $5,900,000 or whatever in that range is, without extending the debt and saving the money and getting your million dollars back. So it's, there's a lot of wins this time, whereas two years ago, it really wasn't really that good of a deal. So that's why we didn't bring it back.
Oh, that's true. And it's, it's more than, Michael and I go back a long, long way. I don't take credit for all of his failures and whatever, but I take credit for his successes. He just talks too damn much, but other than that, I'm the one supposed to do the talking. But he is, I keep me in that smart, he and Don, you know, spoke, the first thing I said, y'all are right and I'm wrong. Ain't nothing else to talk about. Let me have the commission. Y'all do a good job up here, and I'm proud of you. Let me be in Georgia helping you with your finances all these years.
Mr. Chairman, I, I'm done with my questions, but as we move on, I will have some questions for staff that aren't really related to the actual issuance of the bond.
The only other thing I, I will say that, over and beyond the fact that I wanted to get the taxpayers their money, because that didn't come out of road tax money, that came out of their property tax money.
Right, right.
I'm, I'm wanting to get that back.
And we all put it back there.
And that's, 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 that's what I want to do. But the, but the concept of what we've done, I think Gulf County actually did a bond before I even come on, you know, back in the 90s. I think they did one in, like, 88, 87, 88, and started the process of, of bonding and paving roads that were unpaved, so we could get out of the business of these expensive, these motor graders cost, and they brought a $300,000, plus you got a person on there. So the theory and the, and the effort that we've put forth over the last 20 years in Gulf County has got us down to, really, is it just one really operational motor grader, isn't it? I mean, we've got two, but one's, one's in good shape, one's in terrible shape. I don't know of another county in the state of Florida that's in better shape with equipment about, with, with doing, dealing with roads and that. And I, I think the concept of what we've done with bonding our gas tax, instead of just trying to spend a couple hundred thousand each year on, has worked, and, and the concept I, I, I support. But more than that, I support that getting the taxpayers their million dollars back. So I'm in support.
Macklemore, all with, second by Commissioner Jaeger. Any question?
I do have some questions for staff.
All right, Miss Brian, you have the floor.
Thank you. My first question would be, I, I appreciate the relationship that the county has had ongoing with Mr. Ceylon. Am I saying your last name properly?
That's not where I just called, it was down the east.
And, and this organization, but my question, as a representative of the people of the county, is, has this been shopped? Has it been put out to market? And are we getting the best, the best pricing, the best coupon rate? And we, as commissioners, I don't know what, what reviews that the other commissioners have had, but for myself, I've had some minimal information that was provided to me just before 5:00 yesterday, but no actual market comparison. So I'm guessing that someone on the staff, or maybe someone on this board, has done that market comparison. So my question is, who is, who is reviewing this from a market standpoint?
Mr. Chairman, what staff is looking at? We're looking at bottom line. The board told us a couple of years ago, go out and look at bonding. We look at it, bottom line, it was not worth the time we put into it, the little amount of money we're going to get from it. This time, we're looking at bottom line, as for market comparisons and, and all the details that I wouldn't know, that Ralph would know. We're looking at the bottom line, the amount of money you can get, the amount of money you can get to do something with, and that, that's what we're looking at. How you get there, we probably don't really care. The bottom line is, is, we need to know how much money we can take in, and we're going to take in. And there's several things, one to a million bucks, we're going to get that back, put it in the county coffers and general fund, and then we're going to have, buy a million dollars to pave roads with. That's, that's what we're looking at. How can we do that without really increasing the debt to the county?
Well, that response makes me a little uncomfortable. This is a business transaction, and it should be shopped on the market. There should be a market comparison done. If you were going to go and refinance your mortgage, my guess is that you would look to see what was available to you from different lenders. This is similar to that. It's not the same thing, but it's very similar. And we're paying 300,000 to 400,000. The county taxpayers are paying 300,000 to 400,000 in issuance costs. I'm not saying that's inappropriate, but I am saying it's enough money that it should be shopped. And I'm sure that anyone in this industry would agree, particularly if they felt that their pricing was the best pricing. They would not have an issue with you shopping this, this transaction. So I'm, I'm uncomfortable on behalf of the people that the transaction has not been shopped on the market, and not even the slightest market comparison has been done. It certainly hasn't been provided to me. Another question that I have is, it appears to me that this income stream that we've been using is the gas tax money, and we are maxing out, to some extent, we are maxing out this income stream to pay this payment on the additional money. What happens if the economy worsens, the gas tax revenues decline, and we still have to make our payment? Where is that money going to come from?
Do you want to answer that?
The, anytime we bond, we, there's going to be a certain amount of cover that's going to be required to make sure things, things do happen, things fluctuate. And it's been forever, we anticipate some things do happen. I would, I would refer to you professional, and now you can go back to your first question. Mr. Ceylon is a professional at what he does, and we recognize that over the last quarter century, he's a professional, so we allow a lot on, on those rates coming in that we deal with him on. But, but I would, I would ask Ralph to, to help out, and Mrs. Clerk, Madam Clerk, to help us out on, if they want, in the event that something would have happened, if, if storms come in and we don't get gas, you know, tax coming in, then what happens?
I can tell, I can tell you, is it on, that I'm not an expert in bond issues either, but what little bit I've learned over the years is the county, if they had a shortfall in gas taxes that are pledged for this, they would have to make up the difference or default on your bond. So you would have to come up with other revenue sources that you use within the county.
If, if I could... Other revenue source, excuse me, Becky, other revenue sources that are non-ad valorem taxes.
And your ordinance and bond resolution on the 22nd will have language in front of all five commissioners, that if you adopt this law through an ordinance, it'll specifically state as non-ad valorem streams that you would pull from if there was that shortfall that you referred to, commissioner. So that'd be written into your resolution and also the law, the binding ordinance that would bind the county going forward. It wouldn't obligate the taxpayers to ad valorem contributions towards this shortfall.
So...
Yep, excuse me, I, I had one other thing. Other safeguard you've got, so to speak, is if we, at some point in this figuring out how to do all these things, we could have gotten you something over $6 million for paving roads. Well, Don and Michael said, let's don't do that, let's back off of that, so that we would have another million dollars in debt capacity if you needed something to happen to the tax revenue that comes in. So you got that first, then you got getting the money from the drink box or wherever, you know.
So you're saying there is a, still remains a slight cushion, that we didn't take it as far as we potentially could?
About 16 and 1/2 percent of, you know, slight cushion, I don't know. If you keep backing up, you just wouldn't borrow the money, you know?
Well, you know, if you, if you review the past years and the bid ratings and...
Don't I turn that over?
And the, the outlook on the gas tax revenues, it, it has fluctuated, and it, there is that concern. So that's one of my concerns. I just want to make sure that we are looking long-term and that we are planning, or if the economy worsens, what kind of a situation are we going to be in? Because we still have to make those payments. My, my other question would be regarding the million dollars. What does this board intend to do with that million dollars when it is refunded back to us?
Can I, I want it in reserve. I've, I've made that clear. I want, I want that million dollars in reserve. I, I don't want it to go to anything that's a one-time thing. We've, we've, over the years, have had a little reserve, more than what some people thought, but I would prefer, and I'll make that a public statement now, that we put that in a reserve account, that if we have a storm, or if we have something that comes up that we just totally unexpected, that we'll have some reserve. But I'm for reserve.
Okay. And then my next issue is the secondary road and bridge fund, which my understanding is, the gas tax revenues that are not used to make the payment on the existing bonds is placed into the secondary road and bridge fund. Are, are we looking at any other sources to fund that fund? And what are we going to do about these roads? I don't know if we're looking at this bond money for, we talk a lot about paving roads that are not paved. And clearly, as Commissioner Macklemore stated, that would save us money in grading and all the equipment that is involved. I haven't seen a list of priorities, if we have that yet. I know where, we'd have to get this ball rolling. I don't know if the priority list has been made, I have not seen it if it has been. But I know that we have roads and bridges that are existing now that need maintenance. And the Overstreet Bridge is a concern for me. The maintenance on that bridge, as we know, it's a, it's a large bridge that we are required to maintain as the county owns, so we have smaller bridges throughout the county that are in need of maintenance. the county that are in need of maintenance and, and painting. Um, so what I'm concerned about, the funding of the secondary road and, and bridge fund. Do we have a safety net?
I think, you know, well, that would be Uncle Ralph, but didn't, didn't, didn't we say we had a 16 and a half, or 16% cushion?
I pull that out of, of not bonding all we could, you know, that in effect, savings, that's a reserve, that's whatever. And then the million dollars for whatever you all aside, I guess, that, we're going to give it back to you, because you wanted it. You could beat your chest and tell everybody up down, you got that back, but I agree with you, you don't need to spend it willy-nilly.
Uh, uh, Mr. Butler?
Secondary road and bridge, typically that money has been built up over the years by excess monies that were not needed in order to make the bond payment interest and principal payments on the bond, and that money has never been budgeted for anything particular. What we have used it for in the past, we have used it as matched money for grants, um, transportation grants. We have used it for those things that come unexpected, that sometime there would be something that happened. We had issue last year, I think, with a couple of bridges that had to be overcapped, um, resurfaced. There's not, it's not a, a fund, it's not a, a budget that has line items in it for any particular thing. It's there, hopefully, it'd be nice if it never was used, but it does get used from time to time, and we do have to use it from time to time, but if it were to grow big or, or small, it's not, it's not a budget that's, that has to, has to happen. It's, it's a good place to have the excess money in. There's not a whole lot of extra transportation money, gas tax money, but it's a place that must go to, and then by the board it can be spent from that point. Hope for those things the board thinks are important enough to spend our secondary road and bridge.
Okay.
All right, anyone else?
And let me just say that I appreciate the opportunity to ask questions at a meeting that is called for this board to discuss these issues, and this is a big issue when we are committing this county to debt. I appreciate, Mr. Salon, you coming here and answering the questions. I appreciate, um, Mr. Butler, Mr. Hammond, and Mr. Novak answering my questions. This is what it's about. Now, I guess all of you gentlemen, I mean, you've, you've been vocal here today. I guess the rest of you have already reviewed all of this and probably are experts in, in bonding, but I do appreciate the opportunity to ask these questions.
Going forward, good questions. I, I think all of them need to be asked, and, and everybody understands what we're getting into, which we've been into for the past 25 or 30 years in, in Gulf County, so , um, the more information we have and the more questions we have, the better off we all are. Um, as I've said, and we'll continue to state, uh, I, I support the concept of the way that we've done it over the years, and it's proved out that it's, it's, it's certainly worked. A couple of years ago, I was against it, uh, that we just couldn't get enough money, and it wasn't, it wasn't the time. Uh, now, I think it's pretty much the time, and I think that, that obviously the city of Port St. Joe needs some money to do some of their work that they, and this is the, this is the cheapest way to do it, and in my opinion, the best way, so, yeah.
And, and Mr. Chairman, one question was the priority list. Has that been developed yet, or is it just going to be split by district, and the districts develop a priority list?
I, uh, not yet. It hadn't, but did, you submitted, I know districts in the city of St. Joe, and I know I, I did, and...
Well, I think for the purposes of, of doing the bond, there were certain roads that were put on that we thought we might would do. Mine was actually that I told them in Port St. Joe, Long Avenue, you know, uh, but I, that's not, that's not written in stone. I think, I think over this process, once we get this process going, we need to all look at our districts. We need to, number one, look at the unpaved roads that we have, uh, and, and, but at any rate, I think that's a process we're going to have to go through at some point.
Well, and just for my clarification, at the March 10th meeting, we discussed this, and it, my understanding was that staff was going to develop a priority list. Now, what I'm hearing today is that commissioners are submitting their priority lists of their roads. So is, is that the process? Are commissioners developing their own priority lists for their districts?
I haven't yet, but I, I, I probably will.
Just so I'm on, just so I can function here along with the rest of the group. Thank you.
I have not, but I, I probably will, and, and I'll work with staff at, at knowing exactly, I think I know them all, but know exactly what, what roads in my district are unpaved. And at the end of the day, there's going to be a limited amount of money, so at the end of the day, you know, you're, you're, you're going to, you're not, we're not going to get all of our priorities. I certainly don't look to get all of my priorities in my district or anything else, but I think we need to look at the county as a whole and, uh, do the best we can to, to put those monies where they need to be.
Yeah, I'm happy to get with staff and, and work on the priority list for District Three. I just wanted to clarify. Thank you.
But, Commissioner Brian, you voted against the road bond.
Just because I vote against something doesn't mean that my district isn't represented. This is a board, and when the, when the board makes a decision, it goes forward, and District Three will be represented as any other district.
I don't understand that. You seem so concerned about your, your bridge and your roads out there, but you sit here and you go against the vote. So I, I just don't understand that. Don't matter, don't matter. I turned in a wish list.
I did, too.
And it's more just a wish list, but these priority roads, this is something that, like Mr. Jaeger said, that we will work through as the bond process goes through. This is nothing in stone that we're doing.
And, and I'm sorry that you don't understand, but I will just remind you that when, when we took this vote, I stated that I was not necessarily against these bonds. I was against the process. I was against bringing something up that wasn't on the agenda, that the public wasn't aware of, and I received minimal information last night at 5:00. And what the public received was just this public notice that said today we were going to discuss road bond. That's all the information they got. That is what I have, since I've been placed on this board, been arguing against. We need to be more transparent, we need to put more information out so that people know what we're going to discuss and what we're going to vote on, and if, if you have a, if you have some kind of, uh, misunderstanding of that, I'm happy to go on and explain it more for you, but I know you keep calling for the vote. I hear you over there calling for the vote, so I'm happy to explain why the public needs to know what we're doing.
Okay.
Uh, Mr. Quinn, do you have any? All right.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
If I can, and I believe Commissioner Jaeger or Commissioner McLemore made the, the motion.
Yeah.
I just, if I can, before you all go forward, I just wanted to hopefully clarify what that motion was.
To move forward, that's...
I made the motion to move forward. Mr. Jaeger seconded.
All right, anyone, I am, anyone in the audience?
Here's what you are doing, and you, he's trying to tell you nicely, he's got the word of motion for you, because your motion has got to say that you're authorizing a public hearing to be held on the 21st.
22nd of April.
I keep throwing that up. On the 22nd, and at which time, the public and you and anybody can talk about anything they want to talk about at this deal, but that is what you're doing.
Mr. Chairman, can I clear that up?
Sure.
I, I will change my motion, make the motion.
I couldn't have said it any better than Mr. Salon.
Or a public hearing on, is it April the 22nd?
22nd.
At noon. April 22nd at noon. That's my motion.
Your second. Back at him. All right, anyone in the audience? I'll, I'll call for the vote. Any opposition to the vote? All right. Motion passed 5-0.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
As usual, we'll try to do your best job you can do in getting your million dollars back. Get somebody to do that for you, lady.
All right.
Have a drink.
Now, you know that, that money comes back. You know that money comes back. It's not any magic.